I'd like to welcome everyone to the Joint Hybrid Planning Board meeting of September 11th. I'll take a call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Yeah.
Mr. Lucio.
Yeah.
Paulie.
Yeah.
Mr. Olley's not with us, Ms. Filbrick.
Here.
And Ms. Tenny.
Here.
A quorum tonight, I'd like for my November's guests to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak. And like last meeting, I want to stress the need to be recognized by the chair. This meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda, Gail has posted Town of Wenham Public Hearing Notice and Town of Essex Notice of Decision as receipt of correspondence. Then a Lorraine Iavoni letter came to us late today. I have to read it. Going to the full board.
Yeah, there.
Okay, at this time, I'd like anybody from the public would like to speak to us on any item that's not on the agenda with a limited amount of time. Anyone from the public just to speak. Okay, I'm not seeing that. So our items on the agenda tonight are basically the same as last meeting. Warren Articles to move forward to special town meeting, a discussion. Just FYI, I attended the Select Board meeting last Monday. Specifically asked them if they were going to have a special town meeting and they said they still don't know. They didn't think that there was something, there wasn't anything urgent for them to have a special town meeting. So they said they would know in two or three weeks if they were going to have one. So I mentioned to them that we had voted that if it was just to have a special town meeting for our items, that we voted not to hold one, so keep that in mind. So moving forward with the first item, an update from the Senior Housing Subcommittee on Reception 9.4. I understand you guys met on Friday.
Yeah, we met twice.
Twice.
We met August 31st and last Friday. And the, we reviewed the goals that we had done in the joint. We had a sort of like a word thing where we talked about goals, which should be in the minutes. Actually, I summarized them, I kind of put them, that's Chris, that's one person's. Anyway, we talked about those and we sort of talked a lot about scale of housing appropriate to the districts. And sort of went around trying to figure out how to, what's appropriate and what, how do we zone it so it's appropriate? So you have to sort of know what you want and then what, how to affect that outcome. And we all, after the 31st, we all went off and we're supposed to come back with a proposal for addressing scale. And so on Friday, we had several proposals, one fairly well-formed and the others were sort of more ideas. And Chris was not there and at, on Friday unfortunately. And, because I know he's, he had a very specific proposal of 15 units per acre and a minimum if there was a certain threshold, minimum number of acres if there was a certain number of units. But we kind of hashed through a lot of different what-if scenarios. And I think we talked also about the LCD, housing in the LCD, I'll come back to that in a minute. What we decided on the scale question and actually on the bylaw as a whole is that we still don't know what we want, except some sort of increased density for, bonus for senior housing. We have a lot of questions about how to get affordability into senior housing and we've given some questions to Town Council for that, to answer that, so we can build that into the senior housing. And what we concluded on scale and other issues is that we'll, that we don't know and that we need to get more information. And so we, at our next meeting, we'll, truly Friday at 8:00 AM, we're going to all come with questions and we made a small, a short list of people who are in town who are senior housing developers or developers or, or Mary has already met with the town planner in Hampton, I believe.
Do we have to meet with developers that are in town?
No, well, we'll talk, we'll make a list, yeah. No, it doesn't have to be developers in town. And sort of say, you know, what would, what does the market want, what is it, what are you looking for? And then we can sort of say, does that fit with Manchester? So kind of some background work and.
So they're coming in?
No, we thought we would do it in twos outside and then we might get more candid responses if it's not in public. And then we'll report back. And it would just be easier to schedule and so forth. And then lastly, we talked about the LCD and housing in it and sort of challenged the notion of not having housing in the LCD. And what we, I think concluded is that what we don't want in the LCD is, you know, two-acre lots with houses distributed as in Zone E, but that a cluster or a group of homes or a group of townhouses that had a built-in community as a residential community of a number of houses that had senior housing would be, would meet the goals of senior, would, as one portion of senior housing, would be sort of acceptable as residential. And that especially with senior housing, it can have a tax benefit without significant services depending on what is there. We also sort of challenged whether or not our draft bylaw that says that if it's in the LCD, it has to be a larger facility with many services, whether that was really what we, that we wanted to exclude sort of a X number of townhouses in the LCD, which is what the current draft does. So for all those reasons, we decided we will continue to work on it Friday at 8:00. And that we, the three, and it was Sue, Mary and I agreed that we should not put it forward even if there is a town meeting in November, whatever month we're on, November. Anything, I guess before I, anything to add from either of you guys? On that discussion?
I guess I would just add that this is an avenue we're exploring, right? Like that is not a definitive, right? I got the impression we're trying to break it down into smaller pieces, right? And reach out to developers, kind of get their take on things, what's attractive to them, what's not. Like Sarah said, I reached out to the Hamilton Town Planner and I spoke with him this morning on their senior housing bylaw. So I guess in gather, information gathering mode.
Right, I think that the developer question is twofold. One is, you know, what, people to help us vision what could be. And also a little bit to hear, you know, if somebody wants an incentive to build a 600-unit, you know, facility out in the LCD, you know, what is it that they want, because that's, you know, what might we want to avoid? Just get information because it, it's, we understand it's a need that, but it's, we're not sure what that is, how to meet the need. And so people who are working in this area, we thought would be useful to talk with. And I, and I want to acknowledge, unfortunately, Chris was not there for the discussion, so. And he, he's passionate about this topic and I, I think I would be remiss to, I'm accurate to say he will be disappointed. So, um, he's worked hard on this issue.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Have we defined what a senior person is and who is allowed to do that?
So we did send questions to the, to Jonathan or to Town Council about a couple of things. What about, how do you ensure age? And, and people are doing this other places, so there's got to be a way. And then what does it, you know, what is that defined? Is it one person that's over 55 and nobody over eight, nobody under 18 or how do you do that? But also particularly, how do we build a bylaw that helps to create incentives for senior housing, but also the affordable piece? And that, one of the questions is if you make a affordable requirement in a senior housing facility or collection of homes or whatever it is, does that affordable unit have to be open to families? And can it, or can it be also be age restricted? So we debated that, but we thought, let's get Town Council to weigh in on it. We also asked Town Council about how do towns do a cap? What's the best way to do it? These are questions that even if we don't include a cap, might be asked of us, you know, what, or it might be amendments on the town meeting floor that say, well, I want only have 10 a year or 100 a year or whatever it is. And knowing what's legal will help us to put forward something, I think, that's stronger and also to, to ask and answer questions about it, so.
We talked about looking at this by district and what's allowed in each.
We did talk about that.
And that sort of got us into starting with the LCD first because it seemed the easiest to try and figure out. Because when we started to look at the more complicated districts first, we were having a hard time envisioning, well, what do we really want there, what does the town really want? You know, our population, our senior population is a diverse economic group and we just started talking about all those factors. But we're definitely looking at what might be appropriate in each district. If anything, you know, being cognizant of, I know Chris's view is that we should have something in every district.
Or allow something.
Yeah, allow, allow something in every district.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, any Planning Board, Christine?
Could you just, I guess I'm confused, so you started with the LCD, is that correct?
No, well, we discussed, we had a discussion about whether or not, whether or not housing in the LCD, sort of, we've, we've sort of, it's not allowed now. And if you put housing as a collection of housing, as, you know, not just a single house separated by lots of space, would that be, would that help to meet certain people's needs or be attractive to people or generate revenue? All the things that, and we used, and Sue came up with the idea of Lyman Circle, which is the, now on Summer Street, the old horse rink. It's 11 homes that are, I think, on about 10,000 square feet each. And their assessed value is 1.4, so it's obviously not affordable, but it is, we presume largely owned by people over 55, not, I don't, we didn't have any census data, but it was our sense. And I think that's accurate, I think this, and so we, and it seems like they're attractive to the market. And so, and are generating few school-aged children. I don't know what, you know, or might. So, you know, as a different model than necessarily requiring the LCD to have sort of a full service facility. It doesn't preclude, you know, we can, so we, so we just explored, explored breaking it down by district and the LCD is the one we talked about, so. And we do have minutes that we.
So I just, so did you guys talk about the difference between like a facility and a development? I mean, I feel like starting to use the correct language or any language that means something could be helpful in this.
Because we're starting to, yeah, we didn't, we haven't spent too much time trying to parse that out.
Well, that's one of the questions to Town Council, is for them to define what's a, you know, well, maybe you're asking a different question, but what's commercial and what's considered residential.
Correct.
So did you look at parcels at all? No, no, we need to.
Oh, that's where we.
Laura.
I mean, it sounds like you're all getting a good process going and I, as I looked through this, I saw some things that maybe in the course of the LCD, you'll continue to discuss and review, like minimum lot sizes and different dimensional constraints than the underlying district and the density cap on acres. And I, I would want to make sure, and again, I, the LCD, I agree, is the easiest one to sort of tackle if you're talking about potentially, you know, development with more than five units or whatever. I'm just like pulling something out of the air, right? But like a larger unit, whatever that means.
A community of some, of some number, right.
Of some number. Wanting to make sure that we're making it possible and.
Right.
Attractive to build a good community, it's also not unintentionally creating more sprawl.
Right, right.
Because that would be, you know, I think we're going to limit the footprint of these things, limit the environmental impact and make them compact, compact in size, which the, which this starts to get at in terms of size of units. But, you know, kind of compact in environmental impact and making it walkable for seniors too and not making, I think Lyman Circle is a fine model as a, you know, kind of cottage-style unit, but.
But it's not walkable.
It's not walkable, it's not the kind of, you know, maybe two-story or three-story kind of apartment units for seniors who need a one-bedroom or studio.
No, we didn't.
There's lots of that market, he puts it in the capital A.
Yeah, agreed, I think.
Mary.
Could I, I'd like to suggest that the Planning Board do a survey out to residents and say, focused on the senior housing bylaw and what residents, you know, obviously we'd have to figure out the wording, but kind of, you know, throw out different size units, what, what do they see as, as fitting into Manchester? Are they looking for, what are they looking for?
Is any of that in the master plan already?
Well, and again, the master plan data is from 2015, 2016, so I think it's time to refresh some of that. And I think, you know, if we're looking at the senior housing bylaw right now, why not do a quick survey? Hamilton Town Planner said it took them a few times to get it right, so I'm assuming it went to town meeting a few times. So maybe we can try to streamline it more with actually getting data and resident input, front-load that as opposed to back-loading it.
So you have a citizen approach and then you have a developer approach, it sounds like. And am I correct in saying you're going to go by these two-by-twos this week?
No, this week.
And then present on Friday?
No, 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 no.
So what is Friday's meeting?
Friday's meeting is to come up with questions for the people we're going to, and kind of come up with an interview protocol for, and figure out who we're going to meet with, came up with a shortlist, so.
Oh, nice.
And I think surveys are, well, we certainly can, in our subgroup, talk about a survey.
I was going to ask another question about the developer approach, which I think is helpful to get some sounding board on, you know, how the math has to work from a square footage and number of units point of view and size. And I think it would be great if we could talk to some nonprofit developers.
Absolutely.
Not just the for-profit ones and see, you know, if the profit motive is taken out of it, but you still need to be sustainable as a financial model, I think that can tell us a lot about rightsizing it. And it might also tend towards a more lowercase a, affordable as opposed to more luxury units, say.
Exactly.
Do you have any suggestions?
I, I mean, I, I hear of, you know, nonprofit developers around here, Harbor.
Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat for Humanity, I think is more of a one-off, you know, unit type, but Harbor, I think Chris probably knows some of these folks. And the Affordable Housing Trust, I would guess, has been working with some of them.
Yeah.
I don't know them off the top of my head, but I know that they're out there.
Agreed. I think also we'd love to see, you know, if somebody has taken, you know, whether it's in, it doesn't pay in Manchester and Beverly taken a two-unit home and converted it with, whatever their senior bylaw is into three units or something simple, relatively simple. Or somebody has converted a single-family home into three senior houses in another community. Understand how that happened and why or where did it happen? Or did those bylaws result in that? You know, did they, well, maybe a few other towns to say, what did your bylaw result, actually, what was the result of your bylaw? Because that's kind of a, you may think that we're creating an incentive, but it may not bear out. Because just because we zone it, doesn't mean it'll get built. So the other, you know, we also are cognizant of the increased density in some places in the MBTA district and want to have that be sort of thought of. Before we say, you could have double the density or, or something. We talked about, we talked a little bit about, you know, that we need to think through what, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not saying we want double the density, but as a for instance, you know, we talked about a formula that would create a additional density, so.
Appreciate it, yeah.
So I did, so I guess my concern with the LCD is that, you know, the master plan says to save some space for small-scale commercials. So I think we need to make sure that we're not excluding that opportunity because if we're allowing housing in the LCD, is that opening up a door to allow commercial other places? And Herbalite is one of the few nonprofits that actually pays taxes, so if we do down that avenue, one of the downside would be lack of tax revenue because not, most nonprofits are tax exempt. So getting their model is great and like I said, Herbalite actually did a great presentation in Gloucester a few months ago and I might be able to dig up that, but there was quite a few examples from Salem and repurposing some older buildings. One was a church closer to the downtown that was geared towards, it was like a, maybe an rectory or something that was senior housing. But that, my concern about housing in the LCD, we did go down this 40R, so maybe we need to pull that off the shelf, look at that zoning because that was part of some grant money. I don't want to, you know, make us, you know, compliant with the 40A, that's, you know.
40R.
Yeah. The grant money from the 40R that may be tied into the 40A. I think there's so many layers to this, we need to be careful of unintended consequences and.
So I think that one of the things that we also have to be cognizant as we think about this is that there are unintended consequences with our status quo. People, so maybe not around senior housing, but around development or around, so, and you can't, it's hard to know, it's hard to look into the future.
So I know we have an option on the cornerstone church, right? So I mean, can we just start to like maybe pick some properties and see if they're viable?
Well, there's an option.
The town.
It's a good idea. Is that something the town's considering?
Well, they were considering it for, for a senior center.
Are they still considering that?
I mean, that's what I mean, like the option's still there, so I mean, no, I think they're using at the next door, behind us for the senior center. So if the option's still there.
But our money is there to do that?
Something to pursue. So I think.
That option expired on the cornerstone church, just a heads up.
Doesn't mean we can't.
Exactly, we have money and the Affordable Housing Trust, I mean, can we afford it? I mean, we can finance things, I mean, if we're trying to be creative and make housing.
We'll see if they've moved on from this.
So I guess our poor, our purpose was trying to get the, get a bylaw. And if we, but, and maybe there are some possible sites, but we want a bylaw that's kind of, so that might be a good, you know, what-if option for places like, there's only one cornerstone church, but pulling a few properties or maybe I was also taking some pictures of things that exist out there on the places. I don't know, I just felt, we just really felt that we needed to have more, be able to answer more questions. So it's.
Laura, you had, yeah.
I was just going to respond to the multifamily 15 units per acre where there could be different models for multifamily housing than there might be for senior. If you're in the kind of apartment situation, I think it's going to be possibly, you know, more units per acre than that, depending again on the size of the development. But it has to do with the program of the building and the size of the units and the adjacency of the units, right? If it's people who are basically essentially in, in one or two-bedroom units on a double-loaded corridor or that's something different than the multifamily housing that has two units or three units.
Right.
So we should just be particular to the kinds of, and if Herbalite's, I think a nonprofit development is still a great model because it's a, if Herbalite pays taxes, that's great. It's a, can be a great model for people who are living in those developments. And if we can get some examples of kind of, you know, benchmark.
Yeah.
How big, how many units?
Yeah, I think what, I want to see what is the possible rather than what we tend to go to is, oh, people wouldn't want that. And I think we want to see what's the, what's the opportunity in an affirmative way. So I, I guess that's, and we felt we didn't have the, I don't, I don't feel like I have the planning, the background in, particularly in this particular need. But we recognize this emergency. So, because right now, I think the meeting any senior housing need in Manchester is going to come largely from the private sector right now. I think the nonprofit, the public sector is going to be focused on the big A, affordable housing or town needs. My, that's my hypothesis, but I could be wrong. So, so anyway, that's sort of, that's where we're at.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys are advocating to move to take this off special town meeting and continue to meet and move this along with the Subcommittee.
Yeah.
I know Chris is not here to vote, but I'd like to get consensus from the board that we would like to, we're not ready for this and that we won't just not bring this up to special town meeting if there is one. Do anyone object?
I just add, I don't object to that. The other piece of this is Betsy and Gail and I went around about when we, if we were to post, basically if, in order to meet the deadlines, we would probably need to post something tomorrow for a public hearing for this topic.
We don't even have language.
Because, yeah, no, so we don't have, we have not advanced, you know, well, we have the draft language that has been floating around and it seems like that's got.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, but I don't think we're ready to move this forward.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry.
Or anybody disagree? Okay. And so this is similar to the next item, which would be the Language of Table of Uses. I don't think this is, this is still in flux. I think we're waiting for some Town Council on the discriminatory nature of the language.
We got, I got.
For the ADU?
Yeah.
It's not an ADU, it's a family.
No, for the table of uses, yeah, the ADUs.
It's not an ADU, but.
Allowing.
The family member.
Family member to live as opposed to employee. And I think there was some nature of discriminatory language, so I don't know, Betsy's not here, if Town Council responded or not to that question. I think they did and said it, they cautioned us.
Yeah, we had the email.
Okay.
It seems like we would have to decide either to change our definition or change what we're proposing to make it work. That was my quick take.
He says I do not suggest any amendments to the definition.
So again, this is somewhat to deal with some density. I'm thinking we're not ready for this and it's something we can, there's no urgency here, we can push this off till spring.
Well, what he's saying is that the familial connection would raise a fair housing concern. So it prohibits discrimination of the rental or sale based on a familial status and provides it should be unlawful. So I think.
I believe Sarah and the ZBA were asking us to add another word in addition to employee and the suggestion was family. So family is discriminatory, I think we really want to back off that and not use it, that's not our intent.
Right.
Can we just strike the word employee?
That's what's new.
And accomplish the same thing? Have we asked the, could, could we ask the lawyer that? Otherwise, we're not changing the use or anything else.
Right. Right.
Otherwise, we're not changing the use or anything else about that law. We're just striking employee.
So. I think what that's opening up, which is different than what's been discussed and, and would perhaps have some pushback is then it's just saying that you can have a detached ADU. And that's different than what we currently have, whether you change language or not. So now it's saying you can permit a detached ADU. So that's just something, if so, if, if the town wants to have that, I, that's what this is now saying.
So I guess I, that's a good, I think that's actually a good idea to pursue and the, I've thought a little bit about this, and if I have, if I make an ADU for my mother-in-law or an employee and then, or my son, and then, or an employee, employee, just some, you know, I don't have a gardener, my gardener. You know, or somebody who takes care of my kids, a nanny. And then my kids grow up and the nanny continues to live there, but is no longer employed, but is the same person. Now is not a family member and is not an employee. How is that detrimental to the neighbors or the town if that same exact person has lived there as a nanny and then as a non-nanny? To your, so, so that would argue that if we were okay with employee housing in a carriage unit, then we should be okay with a employee who becomes a non-employee, essentially, a person who become.
Well, in my thinking about regardless of the specific person is, we're giving, it seems like we're giving a privilege to someone who can employ someone and live on their property as opposed to anyone else who's not in that position.
Exactly.
Right.
So what if we just cut that qualitative word? And then we, we haven't changed the bylaw except to say it's not, it's not in regards to employees and it's a workaround right now anyhow. People are.
And it helps us with senior housing a little bit.
Yes.
So why don't we just, I mean, then we only need one ADU bylaw. We should combine our ADU bylaw that says you can have it within the house or you can have it detached, because that's what this is. It, you know, it's a nice scenario that you give, but that's not what probably ninety percent of the scenarios would be. It will be people renting out their units above their garages or both, both their house and the garages or whatever it is. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm saying that's what will happen. So I don't know that the current employee bylaw has the requirements that our current ADU bylaw has. So I think we need to look at that because people will just circumvent our current ADU bylaw and say, you know, it's a, you know, for any detached, I can do anything because we have the separate bylaw now that's different than our ADU bylaw. So I, I don't think it's as simple as just having a, now a detached unit that is, could be very different than what we require for our ADU bylaw.
Should we roll this up when we discuss the ADU bylaw?
Well, then we get into the, constructive, whatever, the majority approval of, and the ADU bylaw has a whole bunch of other issues around, you know, double lots and nineteen, buildings that existed prior to nineteen eighty-four. So I, I think that it is a more, I think there is a comprehensive piece, but we can't seem to get agreement on the ADU bylaw. Um, I think Laura makes an interesting argument to have, um, to do this. But I also think we want to have it be available for, not for, we're not trying to do the, um,
Available.
Airbnb piece. That's the, I think that's the concern. We really want it to be housing for people who live here, not KBU, not Airbnbs, at least that's my.
I think most people agree with that.
So maybe there's a way to, um.
Put some guardrails around.
Put, put a guardrail for, um, for rental, for residential, um, or, you know, exclude it for use other than excluding the short-term lot.
You don't want the short-term rentals. You don't want the short-term rentals.
Yeah.
This is part of your subcommittee task, this item?
No, it's not. Yeah, that's going on. But I think that there might be a very easy guardrail that we could put in. Maybe we could ask council for. So I think Laura is making a really interesting point. We've been batting this around. We know it's a ZBA problem. And it does give us a little bit more, little bit of progress on the housing and it give, would give us an opportunity, if there were town meeting, which there might not be, an opportunity to, to ask the town how they feel about.
Striking the word employee exactly.
Uh, no, about the, essentially allowing a, a type of ADU.
Well, by doing that, you're striking the word employee.
Yeah, strike the word employee and I would say put a guardrail for.
Anybody know what bylaws is?
I would like to run that by Sarah Melish.
It is the, it's table four point two, section number.
Thirteen.
We don't have any, but we used to have description on it.
I don't have my bylaw. It's in table four point two. It's the, the language in the, um, proposed bylaw.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's on the second page of the email. That Betsy.
Yeah, two or.
Sent to Jonathan, how it presently is.
Oh, yeah, I'm just looking for what the bylaw number is.
It's the table four point two note thirteen or whatever it is. That's where it is.
Oh, no, thirteen. So, yeah, I mean, I, you know, we don't need to spend much time on it tonight, but obviously this is vastly different than our accessory dwelling unit bylaw and because this one has no size limit, it has, you know, an accessory structure that would have different setback requirements.
It's an existing, these are existing garage, stable or other existing structure.
Right, but again, it has no definition of existing, so I could build it one month and go to ZBA the next month and say, I have an existing garage that I wanna do A, B, or C with. I, I'm just.
I'm wondering if this opens itself.
Of course it does. So that's why it's gotta be, it's gotta be more defined. But what does it open us up to more housing if we put guardrails around short-term rentals?
Well, Airbnb, what about this Airbnb?
That's more, that's short-term rentals. So each new housing unit that you're gonna create like this is going to put us back on our affordable housing list. So unless we get our hands around some kind of affordability, we have the forty A coming at us and we're already a hundred units behind.
So that's an argument for never doing anything to increase density.
No, it's, it's an argument for it's going to, we have limited resources. We have limited land and limited resources. So if we're always gonna be under the threat of a forty B, then we need to attack the affordability portion, not just create more housing. So we can have people deed restrict those and that would be an affordable unit. So we need to maybe offer some incentives, maybe use some Affordable Housing Trust money and give them one-time payments to deed restrict some of these places. No, I mean, we can't just keep letting people build housing without addressing the affordability issue.
Deed restrict is a good idea, so we could deed restrict for affordable or deed restrict for senior housing, which is what we're saying we're looking for.
So that, people have approached other, you know, property owners with some of these places and if property owners would like to deed restrict a carriage house, then that could be a solution. But just increasing housing without addressing the affordability issue, it's, we're just going down the path without a plan.
Uh, Laura, sorry.
We've been increasing housing for decades. We have no controls over single-family housing subdivision. So I think the housing increased, that's what got us to where we are today. So I think we're talking about something separate. We do need to look at affordable housing, but I think we don't stop considering our other housing needs that are smaller in scale, and we have this already on the books. I think I'm just saying, let's not define some particular population that how many, what percentage of the people in town can afford to hire an employee to live on their property? Like, it's pretty specific now, and if it's, we're trying to be anti-discriminatory about it, should we not make it the same rule for everybody?
So could we get a handle on the data before we go changing or, or adjusting things? Could we understand how many of these we have?
No, we don't have, how do we know, and what difference does it make? What if, what is the number, how does the knowing the number change?
Because Laura was just making the comment that, that, you know, people aren't like, you know, having these for hiring people anymore, right? Or, or there's not that many, or, or, you know, so I, I'm just, let's get a handle on how many existing garages we have.
That would require a door-to-door search by somebody to go to every house and look into it because otherwise the data is not available.
So, I, I guess I.
Somebody like.
It would be important to be, to be able to understand how many living quarters, which are in essence having to, have gone through a special permit, have gone through this. So we, like, we would know by the special permit process.
Well, actually, we know that, that I believe it's like five in the last four years.
Yeah, there wasn't that many that you pulled, right? There wasn't, uh.
So that begs the question, why are we changing the bylaw for five workarounds?
Employee, that was the employee, so, um.
Sarah, uh, Sarah Melish.
Sarah Melish, yeah. So five with the employee housing and we believe that some of those were for family members. So, um, I don't think.
It's sort of watered down now because people get around this employee thing by just saying, you know, I hired my mother, you know, to cook once a week, my employee.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we post a public hearing, because that will give an opportunity for us to hear from the public for, to change note thirteen of table four point two and strike the word.
Before we do that, can we?
Uh, yeah, to, to address this by taking out employee and adding in a provision for prohibiting short-term paying guests. So.
So I mean, this definition of short-term paying guests is less than six nights, so then you have someone in there for a week and so now they're not short-term, but it's still Airbnb. So there's a lot of issues with the definition in our town. So short-term, I don't think solves the problem.
So let's adapt on the motion.
Yeah, my point is, my point is to, to intend to just at least have a public hearing so we can kind of think through the issues with the public. That's my point. As opposed to, um, you know, it's an interesting idea. It's a fairly narrow issue despite the fact that we can, um, we've already come up with some issue. And, uh, and that it gives us a small, um, progress, I think, toward some of the goals. So the motion would be to put it to a public hearing without trying to wordsmith the.
We're second on the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think that, my guess, the other piece is a public hearing doesn't obligate us to put it on the warrant. It's just an opportunity to hear from the public and think through it.
Laura. Would it be helpful to have someone from the ZBA who's had firsthand experience join us for that public hearing?
I was, to that point, I was gonna just write Sarah Melish on the proposal of what we're thinking of doing.
Yeah.
And just getting her opinion, that she could definitely be, either write something to us or correct. That was my thought. The issue I have is when do you wanna, think we wanna do this?
Yes.
Because just, you know, I don't wanna jump ahead too much, but next meeting we have primer on floodplain and
And we can't, it, we don't have enough time to post it for next meeting. It would have to be, because it needs.
It won't be until October or November and, um.
Right. I think we, I was gonna suggest October ninth, that's the.
Three weeks.
Yeah, that's three weeks.
Columbus Day.
That's Columbus Day. So October tenth would be our meeting and the, um.
So that's the day we're supposed to get the application in from cell signaling, I mean.
Okay.
So I don't know how much we're gonna get tied up, you know, going forward with that and the MBTA, but go ahead, Laura.
I was gonna say it's, um, probably not as urgent as some of these other things that are coming for us sometime this year. And maybe we also put the question in the meantime to council and say we'd like to strike employee and we wanna put some guardrails on around rental terms and.
And not try to do it for fall.
Well, we're not having a fall town meeting. I mean, if we're having a fall town meeting, senior housing's not on it.
Town meeting.
This one thing doesn't seem like the reason to have the one fall town meeting.
No, we wouldn't have a fall town meeting, but if there were other items on the fall town meeting.
I guess we'll just see where we are. I mean, we've been working on this thing for so long. I hate to put the cart before the horse in terms of a lot of other things on our plate, but.
All right, so then add, maybe withdraw the motion to say have a.
Sometime this fall.
Sometime this fall and ask council for some language first. Then we have a public hearing sometime this fall and then at least hash it out in public and I think that's.
Well, in the meantime, I, I like Laura's idea of bringing it up to town council and to Sarah.
Yeah. Right.
So I will pursue with Sarah and, um.
Okay.
And town council. And could you specifically tell me, just strike the word, can you write to me what it's thinking?
Okay, there's a clause here to be occupied only by an employee of the owner occupant. So I guess we would strike that clause. Family living quarters for, I don't know if you can say family, that would be a question for.
Just family living quarters.
Family living quarters, maybe that's fine. To be occupied only by an employee of the owner occupant. So we would say.
You could also say family living quarters for long-term rental, six months or more, something like that.
Maybe you could just say family living quarters of the dwelling while such garage, da, 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 da. And then we need to add a clause.
About.
Specifically defining, I don't know if the definition's here, but the limit, the guardrails to suit, start right about the time, the time term.
Somebody write that, could somebody write that clause?
Yeah.
So we could move that forward.
I think there's language about AD, proposed AD bylaw.
That's something we can agree on. Okay.
All right, so we won't try and do it in October necessarily, but.
Uh, Christina.
So just when you said town council, it made me think of that. Do we have like an unlimited budget for town council?
No, the town, that's a good point, um.
I mean, just based on Betsy's memo, just.
So town council, we have to vote that we wanted to send something to town council and then I have to fill out a form that goes to the select board that, you know, okay, you can spend the money to town council now. Betsy has been under her own jurisdiction, sending our questions to town council on behalf of the town. So I haven't had to fill out any forms, but without her being here tonight, she might do that on her own, but if we wanna do it, I have to get everyone to say yes, we wanna do it and then I'll have to fill out this form and send it up the line.
I guess, I mean, that's just not the point. I guess the point is, are we, do we have a budget? Do we have tally where we are? I mean.
Well, that would be up to them. I don't think, I don't know what the budget is. I could talk to Greg about it.
That would be good information. I just feel like we're at the beginning of the year. We have MBTA zoning. We have a lot of, not that I'm, that this isn't important, I just, based on Betsy's memo, I just wanna be mindful of.
Maybe we can, on this issue, we actually have council, okay, this is in response to council. And then it's really a simple question of how do we make it around rentals? Perhaps when Betsy or somebody else is talking to council on other matters, so you can slip this in and say how to, I mean, or, for the moment, for the purposes of just getting the conversation going. And then obviously when you write a final, it has to be reviewed by council, a final bylaw, but.
If that, that doesn't happen, does the board have any objections for moving this forward to town council? On our.
I personally think we need a lot more work to be done. I think this was just come up tonight. I think we could go off, look at other communities, see what they look like before we just send it to town council.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think we have some kind of steps that we're gonna take and then we'll we'll talk about it again.
Yeah.
And that's in the process going forward. Without hearing any objections, if Betsy doesn't slip it in, I will move forward with the question.
Okay.
Okay, and the last.
Yeah, let me second that motion, we have to withdraw.
No, I withdraw.
She went through it. So. Lastly, floodplain bylaw, we're not, so Eric Carlson from DCR will be coming to our next meeting to give us a primer. Also, I believe the Board of Health will be at our meeting to answer questions. So I think we're gonna, as the board requested, try to get a primer on this floodplain bylaw and what it's about. So with the primer just coming in two weeks, I do not believe we're ready to even think about, you know, crafting a floodplain bylaw for November, do you have any objection to that?
No, but I think it's good that we're educating ourselves on this.
Right, so. So, okay, so it looks like if I'm not mistaken, we're not gonna push anything forward to the special town meeting. If clearly, am I correct in that statement?
Yes.
All right, thank you, self signaling technologies update. So so informally, Mark Lewski asked to come in for an informal meeting to brief us on what what's going on with the idea of them filing their formal application next month. So Mark will, well, Mark will be out of the country, but his people will be here next meeting in addition with Eric Carlson's group. So we have jam packed meeting. The question I'm asking the board is the town asked us, I gotta get back to these people, moving our meeting from Monday, September twenty fifth to Tuesday, September twenty sixth due to a religious holiday on the twenty fifth.
I can't come the twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth is difficult for me too, I think.
I reached out to you specifically about that.
So that's why I told Betsy not to move forward with this until I polled you guys. So I don't have an objection for the twenty fifth, does anyone?
No.
I know you're not gonna be around.
I think. Yeah.
So as far as the board goes, we would like to keep it on Monday, the twenty fifth. And that's, can I just have a show of hands for the twenty fifth?
I would like to just, I mean, I read the email with Greg and I understand that, but I feel like this is two weeks before the meeting. So I mean, he needs to, select board needs to send out a memo, a policy, we just can't, the date's been on the books and I, we.
Yep. No, I knew you.
He needs to send that, I mean, I was starting January twenty first, twenty twenty four, some new policy, but I I I I agree. Oh, and I feel like we should be setting the schedules a year in advance and this is.
Yeah, it came up unbeknownst to me and I tried to put the brakes on it and Betsy's usually rescheduling everyone to the next day and I said, hold it, let's, let me poll the board first, so.
We met last year on the.
Um, so Gail will try to move it, keep it on the twenty fifth, still with us.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, oh, I see Greg's on, so, yeah. Greg, we'd like to keep it on the twenty fifth, it's not a problem.
Well, I would just say you would better do that on Christmas day or Easter day and it's equivalent. So I I would urge you to reconsider that decision.
Is it a town holiday?
It is not a town holiday now.
Oh. I think the twenty fifth.
I don't.
Greg, we have several members who said they can't make that date. So I mean, the quorum would be in question.
No, I understand, maybe another day during the week perhaps.
Uh, well, that would require me to go back, okay, so there'd be some logistics because of self signaling and Eric Carlson, so would the board consider another date during the week?
I'm gonna be out of town starting Wednesday.
I specifically.
And Laura, you're out that whole week too.
I have a lot going on that week, that's why I specifically sent that email, so it's just unfortunate. We met on Yom Kippur last year, I sent this email to request this. Greg, I am completely sympathetic, I completely understand where you're going, but I don't feel like it's fair. The planning board met on this date, this holiday last year and the year before. So if you are willing and wanting to make this policy, I feel like it needs to come from the top down at a date certain, not two weeks before people have already made plans. I.
Um. It's not a state holiday, it's not a federal holiday.
I don't know.
I I definitely respect a holiday, but I mean, I work for state government and it's a work, it's a workday.
The school. The school open on the.
Schools are open.
Um, so.
I mean, the only other option is just skip that meeting. Look at your face. But I guess if this board doesn't have, like, who has a, Greg, I know, well, it doesn't sound like Tuesday is an option or the rest of the week. If this board had a problem with it and people spoke up a month ago, six weeks ago, and it wasn't published two weeks on the agenda, it is what it is, but unfortunately.
I don't, February second, this is another option.
I mean, we're not, we're not deciding anything, I mean, we're concerned about the.
What about pushing to October second?
Excuse me?
What about pushing to October second, just push it out a week, meet the second and the.
So then we're conflicting with, but then we have Columbus Day that next week, which we're gonna have to meet.
The board of select.
Yeah. And this is what, self signaling, right?
So I would need to talk to cells, so self signaling wants to file on the October ninth meeting.
I feel like we've already voted.
So there would be a lot of logistic changes to move this right now.
October ninth is Columbus Day.
Yeah.
I think we are closed that day.
It is the ninth.
Yeah, October ninth is Columbus Day, so we have to meet on the tenth, as it is.
I got that wrong, okay.
That's bad.
Well, I will not be here on the tenth, but I can, no, I can't soon then actually.
So. You're you're suggesting canceling the meeting in two weeks and doing everything on the tenth of October?
No, not, I'm not actually.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm I'm just saying that, you know, we either meet the twenty fifth or I don't know what, it sounds like nobody can meet the rest of the week. I'm fine with the twenty fifth, but I just, it's up to the majority.
So let me, let me do this, let's, let me tell both applicant, both people that are coming in that we wanna hold the twenty fifth. Let me see if there's any pushback on that.
Did the applicant have a concern about the twenty fifth?
No, not the, not the, not.
It's an informal, it's also an informal presentation of the.
Right, it's informal, they don't have, I don't think they have an objection to either. I I know Eric Carlson did had, was open for either date, so the DCR had no conflict on that.
So like I said again, I I am sympathetic, but we've met on this date last year. It's two weeks ahead of time trying to change a schedule that's been on the books for the beginning of the year. So I I don't understand why we're actually trying to change it.
Right, because we're trying to be respectful.
For this year versus the last two years?
All right, I'll, let's go back to the twenty fifth, I'd rather have the board here than just, you know, two or three people and you all need to hear this. So it's important that people make it, so I don't know anything about Chris's schedule, but I assume he'll make, he'll be back by the twenty fifth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, MBTA communities, multi task force, met last week.
Yep, we did, we adopted the communication plan prepared by Tiffany. And we're working on drafting something to go in the newsletter that I guess is enclosed with the quarter of the tax bills. I, since I never repost, I will now though, not the tax bill, I read the tax bill. Um, I wasn't familiar with what got included in that, but Betsy did a first draft of something, just sort of an introduction because it's really a very small section of our community that sort of knows this issue is even out there. And we're just trying to get people up to speed that here's this law, this is where we stand, this is our plan. You know, you're gonna hear about it to vote at town meeting next year, just that's a very simplistic view. But we're just trying to do an introductory communication to be included in that newsletter. And then Tiffany's working on a schedule with public forums and you know, lots of workshops, discussion opportunities. So that was our subcommittee on communication and outreach. We also decided to include the business community in our outreach, even though that it's not completely made up of voters, but they're all very interested in this. I think that's sort of the highlight.
What about the hiring of consultants and where does that stand and why aren't any, you know, shouldn't that, shouldn't that take a place right now?
So. Yeah, we're, we're, we are anxious about that. I guess we're still waiting for the terms of service of the consultant to be finalized, which Betsy is working on.
So Betsy hasn't even issued their contract yet, is that kind of?
I think that's right, yeah.
So I thought the planning board was gonna be involved with the hiring of the consultant.
I think that's up to the task force.
Up to the task force?
On the consultants, yep. It's in their hands.
We also now have the subcommittee to work on uh, data and trying to figure out the parcels in the districts. Again, that's really the simplistic overview, but.
Who's spearheading that?
Um, let's see, I, you know, I wasn't prepared.
You have to get, you have to get people responsible and to move forward with this stuff because.
So I'm not sure, what does that mean?
It's not gonna happen.
I thought, is that what Betsy was working on, that we were supposed to have data like six months ago, six weeks ago, like, where is that data?
Well. Anything that she's been working on, I think, is available on the website, but I'm not sure what you're specifically referring to, what she was working on.
Betsy, three months ago, said she was gonna have information and data for us by the end of the week.
On what?
Parcels, units, how many we had of this and that.
I think she is still working with the assessor on that, which is why I think some people were anxious to get moving on that. So there is a group of, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I thought Chris was gonna be here, so I wasn't prepared to
Okay.
speak about the details up to me.
Okay, I, I, just, you know, as an observer is just that I think, you know, if they wanna present this for spring town meeting.
Oh, I don't think it's going to be presented for spring town meeting.
Well, one of the select board members thought that at their meeting last, that, you know, that it was gonna be presented in the spring.
I don't know where they got that, I.
So I think the idea is.
Well, that was a thought, but in any case, this, there's gotta be some urgency with task force to meet a little more regularly, I would think, just from a.
Well, we're meeting every other week and the subcommittees meet pretty much every week.
Okay.
I think it's hard to ask people to meet during every other, every other week in the summer.
Well, we did, we did start.
Yeah, it is, yeah, no, no, but, yeah, so I think it's a, it's, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe not two weeks in August.
So, so this Tiffany's gonna provide this, she's gonna back out from November, a schedule?
Yeah, she's, she, yeah, she's working on that.
So with the, the timeline says that there's gonna be an April twenty twenty four vote, so I think that's where you're getting it.
Yeah. Which timeline?
On the website.
Well, um.
So we need to correct, I mean, if if that's not the case.
Yeah, that was a communication plan and the idea was it needed to go to the spring town meeting because if it didn't pass, then you had a second option. So I'm not sure what the subcommittee is, but we are ultimately responsible for this. So I think the communication and the, this task force needs to come meet with us and get this hashed out because the expectations, I'm not sure we're all on the same page here.
I'm not sure that that we are responsible, I mean, the task force was charged with coming up with the zoning. So I think that that's what they're working on and we need to have some, we, I think that everybody understands that there's urgency.
Well, we.
And I think we have to let them kind of do their work, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't need to pick, I don't need to pick on you.
Oh, no, I, I didn't, I didn't, I just wish I had been more prepared to give the details of the meeting.
Yeah, I have.
Instead of having the whole task force here, maybe we have Gar and Chris.
Right.
Maybe we should have Gar and Chris come each time, yeah.
And come in and talk about the urgency.
Cause I could have asked Gar to come if I knew Chris was working on here.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So I would like to make a recommendation that the task force puts into their timeline that the planning board gets the information on X date before any potential town meeting. Because the planning board is going to have to have time to review the documents, the data, discuss as a planning board, have the public forums, do all of that. So we need probably at least a couple months.
Well, you know that it takes, you know, six weeks at least to have a public hearing on zoning and and get a draft and stuff.
So that's why I'm saying that.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be more than one, it might be.
Yeah.
You know, if if this is true, April twenty twenty four, the planning board would want all of this by like.
But I think that.
End of February.
What Sue's saying is it's unlikely that it's gonna have, they're not working to an April, you're not working to an April twenty twenty four deadline, regardless.
That's unreal, that's.
I don't know whether that's.
No, just to put that on the website.
Yeah, that's unreal, it's probably an old time.
Yeah.
This is an updated one, no, cause the old one had, had it, that you, we already had the data and the planning board were pretty much doing public forums by now, so this is an updated one.
That would be nice, I wish you were.
Kooch, Kooch, you'll go back to your task force and
Maybe give a good timeline.
On the date thing and get with Tiffany on on what these dates.
I will ask Chris and Gar to stream that out.
Okay, or or at least ask them, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
So Ron, I, could I ask the person, sorry, um, I listened to a bit of the meeting remotely and.
The task force meeting.
Mm-hmm, so one thing that I heard was that Betsy was giving information to the task force. I would like to request that information that's given to the task force is also, the planning board is also CC'd, so we can stay abreast of that same information. And get a package, maybe catch us up.
I would say pass that on to Chris and Gar.
Okay, that's reasonable.
I would pass along the request to Chris and Gar.
Thank you. That's good.
I would not agree to provide it yet.
I'm not holding you, I'm not holding you accountable, no. Okay, anything else on the MBTA business? On the liaison senior housing, we talked about harbor management plan advisory group, Sarah, any update for the group?
Um, the harbor management planning group met with someone from Urban Harbors, which is a group at UMass Boston who has done many harbor management plans to understand what a harbor management plan is, and it turns out it's whatever we want it to be. But the jurisdiction includes generally harbors and the lands along, or coastline, the lands along coastline, including chapter ninety one lands. And then there was also a woman from the DEP who explained that there are opportunities to have a state approved harbor management plan that and if you have a state approved harbor management plan, which is a complicated and more arduous process, you are able to then use that tool to make up to some very defined modifications to chapter ninety one. Should that make, so for example, you could require increased setbacks from water bodies, for example. I believe that was one of them, there, requirements about, about local.
Local.
And chapter ninety one, as we touched on with the crockers and the crocker boatyard and the Manchester Marine applications, is a state law that governs. is primarily purp- the purpose, primary purpose is to ensure public access to coastal waters. That's its primary purpose, and apparently it's a highly complex law, of course, everything is. And so they, one of the things that I think the harbor management task force wants to do is to get a update or primer on chapter ninety one, so we know what it is. And so I think that would be very useful to the planning board as well, so as as that evolves, you know, it's an important piece, I think the harbor management committee felt that we should pursue first the local plan and then you can transition to a state-approved plan, given that we don't even know what the planning issues we're trying to address are, although we went around the room and talked about harbor congestion, public access, commercial fishermen, shellfish bits closed, climate change. And and then the other thing that we're still wrestling with is and if you do a state-approved plan, has to be from basically Chub Island, which is the Beverly Farms border, to Magnolia, which is an enormous coastline. And we think of the harbor as, you know, what's right out here, so so there's a lot to this. But I think we're off to a good start with a good group that has a lot of experience doing this, who can guide us and more to come.
Thank you, any questions, Laura?
Yeah, I did reading through the facilities master plan that DPW has just completed with their consultant.
Right.
They made a brief reference to the the harbor headquarters, harbor master headquarters and potential for public restroom, other you know, kind of access to the waterfront, but some public amenities there, and in the report it said that the harbor master at least was confident that eighty percent of the funds could be procured from grants, like not really part of the capital plan, and so therefore was not further evaluated in the facilities report. Is it part of the harbor master plan? And if it isn't, maybe should it be? Because if it's not gonna be considered as really a town facility with a potential for funding, then it seems like it's integral to that.
We did not discuss that. I'll tell you that my personal opinion is that it should be and one of the, I think, conflict, it, this is my opinion, not the opinion of the harbor community cells. But that there's, to me, there's a conflict between the, one of the values that we did talk about in the harbor management, just going around, not, you know, we're the sort of quintessential view corridors. And it is, and I think that the proposed location for it is certainly squarely in chapter ninety one.
Sure, only more reason to put it in your chapter ninety one overview.
So that is my opinion, it hasn't been discussed one way or the other by the by the group, so.
Any other questions on the harbor? CPC met on August twenty fourth, we went over the status of ongoing projects, just for the board's information, the chowder house is being re-roofed, they just stripped it today.
Wow, looks great.
It should be done this week, a new red roof.
Wow, it's going up.
We'll see if I can. Our next meeting is nine twenty eight, which is a public hearing that we're obliged to have.
Is the, I I, but the roof was black before, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So they're making it consistent with the rotunda and the.
It's gonna be red to match the.
Rotunda and the.
Yeah.
Should be looking nice.
I I looked at it, I was like, was it red before?
Well, it's gonna be red, they put, they 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 said, I know they just had the underlayman last time I looked, but maybe they started shoveling it already, okay, we have to ask.
They've. I think it's, they started putting, yeah, I think so.
Okay, any other liaison reports? From any of our liaisons?
I think Finn comes meeting this Thursday, they haven't met and I can't go on Thursday, so I can ask someone.
I have one possible, let me look at my email and see if it came in.
Anyone look at the eight twenty eight minutes?
Yeah. In the packet?
So they're in the packet, yeah. So Gail did them from the film, from.
Oh.
Yes, no?
It's still on Friday, it wasn't there, I guess this is becoming an ongoing issue, like we asked for them on Thursday, we get them on Saturday, we got Betsy's report today, like
No, I'm ready to find it.
it's not professional, I don't understand why we can't have the sufficient amount of time to do our jobs.
Okay, um, Laura, yeah, question.
Well, point, all I was gonna say is I was not present at that meeting, so I saw that it was in the packet and I did not, I do not need to compine on it.
Time to be.
I think they, maybe we just take a moment and get them done, we've got time, I I think they're fine.
A motion to approve the minutes.
I'll I'll take my motion to approve the minutes of August twenty eighth.
Six.
All those in favor?
I didn't read them.
You are here, oh, you're great, and so that's.
Three, three and two abstains, fine. But you could talk to Greg potentially about taking sure that we've get these things by our deadlines, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you. Um.
But also the minutes of May fifteenth and actually four of us were there, I I put them in just now, they're very simple, I can even read them aloud if you want.
I did read them, they're.
I read them too. So Florence, may I have a question?
For, yeah.
So subcommittee minutes have to be approved by the committee?
No, with just by the, the subcommittee, that subcommittee's not meeting again, so it would be the
Oh, okay, okay, got it, got it.
Subcommittee.
Got it, okay, got it.
subcommittee, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the subcommittee meeting of May fifteenth, and so it would be Christina, Mary, Ron and I that could vote for that. So all in favor, aye. Okay, Gail, those are in the packet for tonight, so can you get those posted and remove the word draft from them?
Sure.
Excellent, thank you.
And Christina, you got my message today that four meeting minutes on rules and regulations are missing, they have a good submitted.
How did you get the message?
So this.
We never met again to approve that.
May, May, if if you did, if they were canceled, we need to know, so May seventeen, twenty five, thirty one and June fifteen, all came back from town.
They're all posted.
They're posted meeting, so we need the minutes, that were approved.
Need, well, we need information.
Okay, she needs information.
Can you approve minutes if the subcommittee hasn't met again?
We just did that right here, you can just do it in a public meeting here.
I don't think we met, I think that's where all the missed postings.
Oh, yeah, might have been canceled, I could I could look at the dates, I don't know.
Some of them were.
So just give them the information, if it was canceled, let them know so they don't keep housing.
So do these, where do these, like where does the senior housing bylaw subcommittee?
They go with the agenda? If you look on the agenda, there's.
No, 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 but where are they posting them in SharePoint?
No, no, no. Gail, where do these minutes get posted or are they just posted on the meeting?
Well, for like the meetings minutes that we do now, for the senior housing bylaw subcommittee.
They're posted on the website, all the, all meeting minutes are posted on the town website.
Okay, so I'm just wondering where they are in SharePoint, do we have folders for those or?
We haven't.
No, I don't put them in SharePoint, they're all posted on the town website.
We can just put them in the meeting packet, I can post it.
But do you have a subcommittee?
They are in the meeting packet, they have, meeting minutes are in the meeting packets.
Yeah. So we have.
Should we have a file for your stuff?
We should.
Probably, I can create one, that's not hard.
That sounds complicated.
It's not hard, I can create one.
Create a file.
Well, I didn't get anything for you today.
Excuse me?
I didn't get anything for me today.
For me?
It was from, it was from Gail, the messages.
So did you send it?
No, no, I've forwarded something, I'll resend it to maybe I didn't go to your right address.
Oh, you.
Other matter, senior housing subcommittee, we talked about that. Recodification process, other matters. You had mentioned something about having a recodification process kind of made, correct?
Yeah, was that on tonight's agenda?
No, but I just wanted you to just brief the board and see if we wanna move forward with this and
Well.
put it on the agenda.
I don't know if it becomes a board decision, but I obviously wasn't prepared for it, cause it wasn't on the agenda, but.
Well, just a, just a, just an outline.
Yeah. So through a public records request, I was made aware of an issue that happened during the recodification process that the master bylaw documents were not on the town website and a planning board member was making changes unauthorized. I also spoke to the interim town planner for about an hour and a half on this issue. And it's very concerning to me, cause I was told that the town planner at the time did not have direct access to these, Mark Bobrowski did not have direct access to these. Us who lived through this recodification process were constantly trying to ask for the the bylaws that had tracked changes, what was being changed, give us a summary, it was always like, oh, well, you know, just had to pack and figure it out, well, so my concern, my overall concern is that a board member or a couple board members cannot do that, they cannot have documents that they have access to that they change. And then they're not track change and, you know, we paid Mark Bobrowski fifty thousand dollars to kind of be the keeper of these bylaws, we had a town planner at the time and come to find out that they were as much in the dark as other planning board members. So that process is very concerning to me, I've spoken to the state. So I I think as a planning board, we need to understand what the issue is and was, so it doesn't happen again.
Maybe we could password protect these documents, but okay, let's talk about a process.
Well, I, can I just, I mean, obviously you're talking about me.
Uh, I, it, I wasn't gonna, yes, but it is.
I mean. That's fine, I worked really hard on the codification, the town planner at the time did not help. And I I did my very best to be transparent with putting the documents every single week up on the website. I didn't change anything intentionally, maybe an error, but anything that wasn't authorized by this board and I gave you all a weekly memo. So I'm, I apologize if I didn't follow some process, but it was entirely as transparent as I possibly could make it. And and I um, I'm I'm sort of, I'm quite offended that this is how it's coming out. I think to to go to the attorney general or or something is quite quite offending.
Well, I did reach out to you a couple times and you didn't respond. And I I'm sure you you thought you were doing a good process, again, I felt very hands were tied behind my back because I did not have track change documents, things were changing constantly. I kept asking for, again, the the draft line, the track change versions. We we would talk about one item, we wouldn't talk about it again for a few months, and then by the time we talked about it again, the document had changed and there was no track changes, so this is a, this is a a call to have better processes in place, so that this doesn't happen to current planning board members and it doesn't happen to residents. That was part of the issue at town meeting, where there was not the track change documents that people could follow, so I'm trying to right the ship here and.
There were a lot of track change documents, I mean, you could go back years, I mean, you know, but it's it's, I don't know what the value.
There were.
Yeah, years, right. So. I think, maybe we can just, okay, I'm sorry, but maybe we can just agree that we'll talk about what the process is gonna be going forward and not try to criticize the past, those in terms of, at least implying intent, that is, that was, there was no mal- malintent.
I am not implying intent, this is what the emails that I have spelled out, so I it is not me accusing anybody of anything, it is me saying this is what happened, I can finally understand what why it was the situation that it was and we don't wanna do it again. So I think it does merit a good, having good processes in place, who's the keeper of documents and whether that's password protected or whatever that is and that.
Yeah, I think.
Having a town.
We had a town planner change and things got, we were trying to move forward with this, so a lot of things were in play, but understood, so we can not that we're gonna be recodifying anything for soon, I think we're done, but we should have.
Well, with the bylaw.
With.
The other thing, can I just say that, I mean, when I came on the board, when I, there was absolutely no article proposed, it was like this whole big document and I tried to break it down into manageable chunks and
No, you did a lot of work.
and that was the intention and I think we succeeded in delivering something, I don't think there's anything that you couldn't, you know, that was done in secret or anything, I, so I think.
Yeah, no, no.
So I think there, there are plenty of track changes documents that were put forward and maybe not every single one was track changes if it was administrative, but we did not change anything that wasn't with the board's approval. I didn't change anything, it was one, so anyway, sorry that.
I appreciate the work you did, just.
I think Betsy didn't ask me anything about this and Betsy saying that the town planner didn't have access is blatantly not true. That's, anyway, we can, we could debate this all night, but.
All right, Laura.
I just wanna say that we have been, I think, making an effort and delivering on posting, we're posting this to the town website, posting the original language and then posting the proposed language. And having a constantly evolving document that's posted in a public-facing way, I think is not helpful often. So I I wouldn't suggest that that be part of the process. I I think that there was some disorganization of SharePoint folders and so forth when we first, there's still a lot of stuff that's just like out there and you have to search for things, so I think there was some organizational some lack of organization in the folder structure, not opposed by Sarah, but just sort of pre-existing, you know, for however long back, but I just wanna say that Sarah and other members of the board, like we all worked pretty hard on this, I think there was no ill intent ever, I just wanna reinforce that, and I think everything that got presented to the public in a public-facing way showed very clearly the original language, the proposed language, and we also went through a lot of effort on why we were making the changes with articles in the cricket and, you know, presentations, and so we can certainly always improve our processes, but I just wanna show some gratitude to the people who took, you know, hours of volunteer work out of their professional and personal lives to to get this done, Sarah and the others who really led this, so I just wanna be, I just wanna say that for the record.
Thank you, Laura, I think, I agree. I agree that Sarah did the yeoman's work and it showed on the town meeting floor. Okay, Greg, I see you're still on, Greg, do you have a minute? If you can brief us or if there's no information, that's fine, on the town planner search?
I'm sure we have three or four applications so far, of those, one in particular is is very strong. And so we're hoping to move forward with more formal interviews and I'm assuming that it would perhaps be you, Ron, or someone you designate that would be able to sit in on those interviews. We're hoping to do that in the next week or two. And assuming that we have a strong candidate to advance, then then we would do that, and assuming we have a candidate to advance, we can certainly set up the time where the candidate could come before the formal word as well.
Okay, and the timeline and just the plan is to hire someone this year and Betsy's role, is she still, I just could you just define what's, what what the intention is?
Yeah, so ide- ideally, ideally, we would have a new full-time planner on board, not former. You know, if if one of the candidates doesn't work out that way, we are pursuing sort of a planned B to C. you know, if, if one of the candidates doesn't work out that way, um, we are pursuing sort of a plan B to see if we have to do another interim, um, Betsy will not be able to continue on, um, beyond, uh, the October timeframe, she may be able to give us a few hours, um, you know, the October, November timeframe, um, but is not able to continue as interim, um, beyond, beyond October. Um, so, hoping that we can either have a full-time or a new interim in place, certainly by, um, by the end of October.
Okay, any questions from the board, yeah?
Oh, it seems to me that, uh, this is just my opinion, but that Betsy getting the technical assistance for the task force is a high priority prior, prior to her departure. So that's, um, in terms of, I know there are lots of things that she's probably, and, and getting the, the zoning, uh, making sure that the new zoning is published, um, I would hate to have somebody come in new or interim, uh, particularly on the zoning, and it seems to me that if, if she's gonna depart and we might have a a gap, that getting that technical assistance, um, I don't know what's involved, but, um, that's just my opinion, uh.
Are, are the candidates aware of the, the MBTA, uh?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Well, they're all aware of, uh, the procedure and what the state's requiring?
Yeah, that's a high, high priority in terms of experience and, and skill set.
Great.
Okay, any other questions, Greg, or?
Did, did she give a timeframe that was?
She said October.
But for the board to be involved?
Uh, yeah, well, I guess that's, um, probably after they, if you kind of whittle this down, Greg, then you'll bring this the candidates before the board, or, or candidate, is that the intention?
So, it could all be that, um, we have a one strong candidate that we would want to advance, unless, unless, unless the pool expands at this point, that's
Okay.
I think where we're at. And I would, uh, welcome having that person meet all of you in the, in a public meeting, which would be fine.
Hey. Anything else, otherwise I'll take a motion to adjourn and I will.
Just a logistical question, date of the October ninth meeting, you talked about moving that, could we, should we, the day was like October?
Uh, Laura, sorry. So that's a good point, I didn't realize that, so, um, I guess, Gail, are we okay to meet on the tenth of October, uh, town meeting wise, is there is it our conflict to get a room, do we know yet, or shall we just, I'll, I'll inform the board tomorrow?
No, uh, town hall is not open on ten-nine, so we have to meet on ten-ten.
And there's, and we can have this room?
Yes, you may have that room.
So it's ten-ten, so now what the agenda says, it'll be ten-ten and ten-twenty-five, and nine-twenty-five for our next meeting, hopefully, uh, this doesn't pose any.
The fuck, Betsy.
Is that set for nine-twenty-five? Did she just say the F-bomb?
Yeah, well, the, uh, the two people coming in.
Who said that?
No, I don't think so.
What? I'm listening.
So Ron, on the schedule, just, um, I will send you an email, but I won't be on, on ten-ten, um, just for forum purposes, I won't be available.
So you won't be on ten-ten, but you'll be back ten-ten.
On ten-ten.
I will.
And nobody can come nine-twenty-six, or at least four people have said that, so that's enough to, um.
But I can go.
Okay, motion to adjourn, is there a second, any objections, thank you all, we're adjourned.
So, look.